So, we are, where are we now? We are the audience of citizens. So if anyone wishes to speak? Oh, Chris, oh, yes, sir, yes, Chris.
Good evening, Chris Edge, 240 Kensington Road. Have not actually gotten word to Christie yet, but Friday, 10:00 a.m., we're doing a ribbon cutting for American Embroidery, which is located 372 Main next to Sal's Gold. Local woman Lisa Mariano, who took a home-based business out to Main Street. So, 10 o'clock Friday morning, have the scissors in the ready. If you're able to join us, please feel free to do so. We will send an invite by email as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Which is to speak? Yes, Barbara.
Barbara Gombach, 24 Sterling Drive, Kensington.
Hi, Barbara.
Hello. I'm here tonight to ask about the senior housing. When I was here in June, Mr. Medorski was going to come in September and update the council on the progress of the senior housing. And I noticed that he's not here today.
Yes. I will tell you that, he called me the other day. I returned his call. He did not get a call back, and he said he had some updates on housing. So, what, in light of that, I'm assuming he maybe recognized the time of year and what he perhaps had said. So, as soon as I got ahold of him, I will, we can definitely put him on the October, the first meeting in October, and I'll see what he has to say. I didn't, I never hooked up with him, so.
I was gonna make that request. Could he be invited to the first meeting of October, first of October? It's just down at the senior center, and it's during the day.
Yes.
And I'm sure that the seniors will be very happy to hear when he has to say.
Yeah, that's great, that's great, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We'll do that, absolutely. Thanks, Barbara. Anyone else? Audience of citizens? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the audience of citizens, and we'll go to our meeting agenda. First thing is our consent agenda. We have two items on there. You have a question on one of the items, right? Do we have a question or not? No questions? No questions? Okay, then we've, we've read them, and we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the two items on the consent agenda tonight.
Second. Thank you. Further comments, questions? There are none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Close, so move. All right. Topic, new business, number one.
Number one, I'm gonna introduce that. It's a request from Connecticut Trail Mixers to utilize trails in Ragged Mountain for an event. And they're requesting permission to use it, and also to work with the town staff for all set measures. Because the cost is here, in case you have any questions.
Hey.
Hey. Hi, Marcus Gossi, Tom Planer. So, the Connecticut Trail Mixers, they're a 501(c)(2) organization, want to do a running race at the Ragged Mountain, using their trail network there. They've identified a 5K loop that they want to use for the, for the race. They do have a very interesting format, as far as races go. What it is, is 50 participants start at 8:00 in the morning. On Saturday, they're looking for, was it May 30th, of next year of 2020? They start at 8:00, they run 50 racers, run the three-mile loop, the 5K loop, and then they rest. And at 9:00, they run the loop again, they rest, 10:00, they run the loop, and they keep doing that until they drop. Until they drop, until, until there's one remaining runner left in the, in the, in the race. They held this event last year, and the winner ran 32, oops, 32 hours the race lasted.
Wow.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
So, so, last, last year, they worked with the fire department, emergency services, and they had emergency people patrol the area. They were all day, using their ETVs on the, on the trail network, making sure everybody's okay. There was no reported injuries last year. The trails were clearly identified and marked with signage, reflective signage, so when runners are at night, they'd be able to stand on the trail. And last year, they had about 50 runners, and they raised $1,500 for the, $1,500 for the Connecticut Forest and Parks Association. So, they request to run the same, same race, same format, make sure, you know, conservation permission, review the proposal, and they found it acceptable.
Okay. Hats off to them for that race. We have no other questions, you both can take a motion.
Okay, I move to approve the request by the Connecticut Trail Mixers to approve a trail running race that will take place at Ragged Mountain on May 30th, 2020, with the conditions that the applicants works with the town staff regarding logistical and safety measures.
Second. Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
Oh, just one question. This is a running race. About a cycling advancement program.
What? That might have been a... Confused with our cycling races we've had, maybe? We've had cycling, it's not there, but...
That's what happens when you use a template, you know, I haven't seen this.
Thank you.
We recognize it's not a cycling event.
Just so that the record reflects properly.
Yes. Make sure it is a running race on the record. All right? Any other? Anybody here, right? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, so move. Number two.
Number two is a continuation of our discussion. We have more information about the wash bay, and I was gonna, I wanted Doug Sullivan to come and share some of his findings. Good evening.
Hey, Doug.
How are you?
How are you?
Good, good. Just wanted to review a few options for construction that we've done in the past, and I think we're at the point where to move anything forward would require some funding for some design or engineering or something, but we just wanted to come back with a rough budget compared to what we had last time. We, one proposal estimate was between 150, 200, between 150 and 200,000 for construction, plus the washing apparatus. So, that's our first range right now.
150 to 200 for just the building?
Correct.
And then the washing equipment? How much is that?
The proposal was around 15,000 for that.
15,000.
How much is that?
15,000.
15,000, right.
You're actually proposing to build the one-bay, three-sided garage for $150,000?
Yeah, it's to enclose the existing structure, four walls, overhead doors, heat, electricity, ventilation, steel block.
This would be independent building, you need four walls?
It would be, it would, if we utilize the existing structure, they could enclose that, or the option to build standalone building on the same site.
Would we be able to get more comprehensive, like, photos of what it would look like?
Yeah, yeah, I think for a, for a small fee, we could maybe get some renderings, some...
I think that's helpful.
Drawings of what it could potentially look like.
Yeah.
What makes this type of construction so expensive? What are you gonna build it out of?
The proposing black CMU, concrete, black, steel, metal.
And then the height?
In conventional materials. I'm sorry?
It's, it's pretty high for to accommodate the trucks, correct?
Correct.
That's a lot of bread. Is this a David Bacon job, or?
Not, not sure who would, who would be doing it yet.
No, but I mean, are we controlled by federal wage scale?
Yeah, prevailing wage.
I'm just shocked at the cost for a one-bay garage. Seems like a lot of money for park one truck. You're building a building, it will, basically, you'd be able to park one truck, and then the washing apparatus would be on top of it.
Yeah, within the structure, the washing apparatus.
Now, will the floors be heated and stuff, or is that...
We have infrared heat above, radiant heat above, yeah.
Natural gas?
Natural gas, yeah.
With reflectors?
One benefit to using the existing structures, the utilities are already on-site, and the oil-water separator, the drainage. So, we can utilize a lot of the existing structure. If we were to build a standalone building, there'd be a little additional cost with concrete and drainage, and utilities over, away from the building.
Doug, what's our experience going through the CROG on these with the Gordian Group, managing it, and then, you know, the state split up into four different regions with, you know, a small GC running those areas? And those GCs keep changing every couple of years, so I'm just wondering if, what our experience is.
We haven't done any projects, carried out any projects with them, but we have reached out in the past for some estimates. We haven't actually done any construction projects with them yet.
Okay.
If I may add, excuse me, to be clear, Doug, you've mentioned that to complete the engineering and all that, it's highly unlikely you might be able to get it done before the snow hits the ground end of the year?
Yeah, from what the contractors have told us, it'd be a very accelerated schedule to try to get it done, say, by the first of the year, before the weather changes.
Doug, this wouldn't be permanently heated, right? It would just be, you turn the heaters on when you're in there, and then they turn off when you leave, type thing?
We'd probably maintain above freezing, you know, maybe 45, 50 degrees, and then they could turn it up during a storm.
You wouldn't want the pipes to freeze.
Would it be faster and maybe a little cheaper, since there's only a couple contractors involved? The GC, the town do it themselves?
There's a portion we can certainly do in-house, but I think the masonry and the steel and some of that work would have to be contracted out.
I understand, contracted out, but instead of bringing in a general contractor, if you're only gonna have a foundation guy, a mason, and a steel guy, it's only three subs to deal with. Maybe just hire them directly instead of...
Yeah, if, if we take that approach, then we would complete engineering, design drawings, bid it out, perhaps in phases or individually, instead of a, to a general contractor.
Have to sort of push out the project, obviously.
So, it sounds like unfortunately, it won't be ready for this winter, or can it be, could it possibly be ready?
Anything's possible, time and money. If we had an open checkbook and could start tomorrow.
Oh, well, that's no problem.
Potentially, potentially have a good portion of it done, but, you know, with design and getting our internal permits, and it's a tight calendar right now.
Right, right.
Didn't you just, I'm sorry, said that you're hoping it could be completed by the first of the year? Didn't I just hear that?
It would be tough to be, it could be.
Could be, okay, thank you.
Substantially complete, but not realistic, from what everyone's telling us.
Doug, you had also mentioned that we could probably do a temporary fix for just this year, to have some, bring some heat, to prevent people from slipping and falling.
Yeah, we look, there's some construction heaters that could be rented, to be utilized more during a storm versus what we have there now.
So, we're gonna build on that location, obviously, where we wash our trucks?
On or around that location.
Okay, but so, my question is, if it's not finished, and it snows, and now we gotta wash the trucks, where we gonna wash the trucks then?
We have to share space within that garage, as well as the fleet garage.
Those trucks don't fit in a public, in a, like, the public wash across from Walgreens, do they?
Fortunately, no.
It won't fit in there, huh? Too bad.
A quarter.
Huh?
That's a lot of quarters.
Yeah, well, maybe cut a deal with the guy, you know, I don't know, right? Whatever. But, okay, so, so, you will be able to wash our brand-new trucks, even though we're doing the construction?
Yeah.
Hopefully, it's done before the first snow, but...
Next winter would be more realistic, but this winter...
Yeah.
It's gonna be tough.
Yeah, okay, well, I mean, I know you guys, you'll do the best you can, and I know we're beholden to the contractors and material and all that, so...
Procurement.
Procurement, yes.
Could all the town cars be, could they use that facility too to wash, like, the police department, if they wanted to rinse off their car? Is it, or is it just...
Yeah, it would, it would be built to accommodate large trucks, but certainly cars and other town vehicles could utilize it.
Do you wash them now? Where, where the police do? They just run through a car wash, or they wash them there?
Fleet garage.
Huh? You use a fleet garage for them?
Yep.
Why don't they wash them, why don't they run them through just the car wash?
I think we were, we were talking about perhaps reaching out to the two car washes and maybe have some sort of agreement.
That's what Hartford PD does, they run them through the car wash in Hartford, and they cut a, they cut a deal with them and, and run them through. So, I'm there probably every day, so...
The big challenge now is the undercarriage with the salt, so...
Right, right, that's what, that's what I'm thinking, that, that, I think both, both, well, I know the car wash, I think by the Ford dealer, they do undercarriage. I don't know, but I don't know if that one across from Walgreens does...
One does also.
Does undercarriage too. Yeah, to me, you might be able to cut a deal with those two car wash guys, you know? Like I say, I've seen other PDs do that in many, in several towns, seem to...
Coupon, buy one, get one.
Whatever, yeah, whatever, whatever, whatever deal they can, we could, we could work with them, right? Whatever, I mean, I'm sure they would be probably happy for the business, it is a Berlin business, and might be, might save us some rust on our...
Work with these two gentlemen here to reach out.
That'd be great.
Yeah, but I think that, Doug, if you could get some renderings, and maybe on the, this budget email, maybe if we could get just some more specific, you know, more of a itemized...
Break it out a little further, sure.
You know, like, what each thing, approximate thing, each item will cost.
And then maybe provide information on comparing it if we were to do it by subcontracting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No, thanks, Doug.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Happy building. Number three?
Yeah, number three, the last meeting, there was a request to give us, give the council an update on the status of the community center. I have Mike Gehren, who's been assisting with the project, and he'll bring us up to speed, discussion item.
The chairman couldn't make it, so he asked me to just give a quick update. And just to refresh everyone's memory, received a $750,000 grant from the state, actually, to community outreach, and also design, and also see what the options were for a senior community center in town. So, after we received statements of need from the Parks and Recreation, and also from the Commission on Aging, the Public Building Commission prepared an RFP that was advertised August 30th. The bid due date is October 3rd. Essentially, what the RFP is asking for is for schematic design. Define the program, how big, what elements are gonna be in it, a pool, gym, whatever. Select an appropriate site, complete the due diligence on the site, environmental, geotech, all that stuff. Prepare schematic design drawings to about a 20% level, so that at the end of this, it can go to a referendum with a cost estimate. Where is it? How much is it gonna cost? And how big is it? What it's gonna look like? And at that point, the town can make a decision with a vote. And after that, the RFP actually has an advance design to go to 50% level, so that we can go out to a design-build bid. So, that's sort of where things stand. At some point, they're gonna interview the bidders, the shortlist, and then come back to you with a recommendation. That's just design, so it's gonna be design, referendum, and then at that point, we'll, we'll go forward or not.
So, we, we don't have a, wouldn't we also perhaps have chosen a location?
That's in the RFP.
Okay, to go, to go, before we go to referendum, yeah.
PBC looked at four different sites. They, they felt that having town on property was the most efficient way to go, so they selected, as the first site is across from the high school on Patterson Way. It's about 12 acres, when you add up the two parcels, it looks, it's deeper than it looks, and that's sort of centrally located, so that was the, the preference. The RFP, though, has an alternative, if they look at the program, how big it is, access, and it doesn't work, there's three other sites that are identified in the RFP, so...
What are the other three?
Those are, I knew that would come.
Of course, of course.
Pistol Creek, the clubhouse site. It's about 9.9 acres, and it's, it's the entire lot, not just the clubhouse and the parking lot. Newman Property, which is, it's about a 4.2 acre site, located to the right, as you come in the entrance of Sage Park. There's, there's a field there where they park outside, and then to the right of that, so... And I think you could probably use some of the other property if you need, if you need to, so... And then the other site, which was considered the least likely, was the eastern portion of this app site, the Town Hill site, Town Hall site. So, there's about eight acres generally, but there's some issues with rock and slope and other things, so... Those are the four sites that they took a look at.
Not written in stone, yet.
Nothing is written in stone.
Yeah.
How many proposals do we have thus far?
The bid due date is October 3rd.
Right, so are we getting them in?
No, they, they have to come in October 3rd.
Okay.
Yeah, they come in simultaneously.
Okay, well, that's, that's good progress, so it's a good thing.
More to come on this.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Number four?
So, I, I did number four, this was again another request from the council. Just to refresh everyone's memory, this year, the VNA closed better than the year before. Another $700,000 loss goes to 500. And we want to share with you what the VNA is doing right now, outreach programs, and also what they have in plan in sort of a marketing initiative to go out to the community. And also share with you some of the challenges that the VNA might be facing in January, and talk about how we might be able to approach that, and give you an opportunity to ask questions, and provide any advice you may have.
Great.
So, Wendy's here with me to present to the council.
Hello?
Hey, Wendy.
Hi, dear.
How's it going?
Good. It's going, it's going.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, this will just be another update, as I have provided a couple of times before, to let you know where we are in terms of census staffing challenges. Basically, as far as the VNA, services, staffing, everything is in place. I think you were made aware at one of the meetings, we had our state and Medicare survey, we had our joint commission survey, so all of that is kind of behind us. And what we're looking at now is our new payment structure that's coming effective January 1st. And I think I went over a little bit of that at the, the last time I spoke, spoke with you. So, that's coming along pretty quickly now. We had like a year advance notice, but it's right around the corner. So, we've been really busy preparing for that in terms of documentation structure and compliance structure, educating staff, billing structure, those types of things. What our challenge has been really over the last few months has been our census. And normally, in the summer months, it's kind of hard to predict a census anyways, and it seems to kind of level out for a while in the summer, but we're not picking up as quickly as we would like to. What we're seeing is some of our major challengers, challenges, of course, is multiple competitors. I mean, we have a lot of home care agencies in the, in the state. And I think with everyone preparing for the new payment model, people are, you know, out there fast and furiously, building their census and trying to strengthen. We have not been able to really maintain a census over 70. So, what we've done is, and, and part of that too is, there are a lot, a lot of large competitors in the state that work on a continuum. They have facilities, they have hospitals, and it sort of works in a, sort of as a flow. Patients from hospitals go to facilities and go to home care agencies that are within that continuum. Over the past couple of years, people were very busy marketing to be preferred providers of different health acute care settings. The biggest concern is, with that, is that it's, it's, it's a regulatory, it's a regulation that the patient bill of rights is, is respected in that sense. So, patients are actually supposed to make, be able to make their own choices. Now, a lot of patients don't know anything about home care. If they've had no history with it, they've had no experience with it, then they usually will get their information from the hospital or the facility that they're in, and they'll be placed. But, so, part of what we're trying to do is just make sure that patients know that they do have a choice, families, if they have had experience with us before, know anyone who has had experience with us before, that they, that they are comfortable speaking up and asking for an agency of their choice. So, in, in relation to that, we have, other than getting that information out to patients and their families, we've implemented some marketing strategies, and I gave you a copy of, kind of an outline of what our marketing plan looks like. What we did was to establish a marketing team. Before, prior to that, it was Jennifer and myself going out to facilities. You know, when we first came on board here, we went out and introduced ourselves, so that people would relate to a name and a face. We have since then also added one of our office team members, who is very, very well-known in the community, very outgoing, very creative, and one of our licensed RN case managers. And what they've been doing is going out to some of the, to the community, and actually talking to seniors in our, in our service area. And they've been going to senior centers, they've been going to community centers, 55 and over facilities, and they've been introducing them to our agency, and they've done it in some creative ways. They've developed a Wheel of Fortune game, where they give the patients, you know, the, the seniors, information about, you know, our, our care and our services, and then they kind of make a game out of it. And they've been doing this pretty consistently since, well, probably the springtime. Attached to the marketing plan, I made a list of the places that we have been to, just to see the actual members of the communities. And then we have a couple of things coming up tomorrow. I know they're going to the Meriden Senior Center. There's already 60 people that are, that are signed up to attend that. There's one at Middletown next week, and that's also 55 or 60. We've gotten a head count there as well. So, we're reaching out to a lot of people in the communities. And then next week is an educational dinner at the community center, and we have one of our RNs and one of our physical therapists that are going to be there, and they're gonna speak to the residents that attend that. So, I think we're really out there doing those kinds of things. We had some representation at the fair, we had some representation at the farmer's market. So, I think in terms of the community members, we're getting our information out there. What we're also doing, and it's more Jennifer and I, is going out and speaking with directors of assisted living facilities, rehab centers, skilled nursing facilities. As far as going into hospitals, there was a time when everybody and anybody was going into the hospitals trying to talk to discharge planners and case managers, and, and everyone kind of had to put a stop to that, they have their job to do, and, you know, if you have 50 home care agencies out there trying to talk to discharge planners, it just doesn't work. So, that's pretty limited, but we just kind of make the most of and optimize the communication that we have with them when they, when they... So that's pretty limited, but we just kind of make the most of and optimize the communication that we have with them when they, when they send in referrals or call in referrals to us. So, as far as what we present to them, we do bring out, and, and they bring them out also to the community centers, some materials that I did make, Marlo made up three packets, and I can give them to you, and you can kind of pass them along. The, the three are the same, but it kind of has in it what we include. We have, this is the Aging in Place Seminar that will be next week, the dinner.
What day is that?
That is on Thursday, from 6:00 to 8:30 at the community center. And there will be, there's, there are other speakers there too, and it's all about aging in place. And that's our focus, is to help people stay at home and still get the care that they need. What we also did was we updated all of our pamphlets and our postcards that we give out to facilities and to patients. Just kind of updated them with current information and made them a little more colorful. And we also did the very same card, only we did it in Polish, which is very helpful. And then in here also is our updated pamphlet with our goal, our goal is to keep you at home. And we've included pictures of our, of our staff, and patients like to have that. They'd like to know who's coming and who's who, and putting faces with names. So they, we've had a really good response to these, and then there's also a picture of our service area map. So we've kind of brightened ourselves up a little bit. We also give them a file of life, which they keep on the refrigerator for emergency situations, for EMS when they come that look for this, with diagnoses, medications, those types of things. And we give them a list of marketing events. We do blood pressure clinics weekly at, at our senior center, and we do blood pressure clinics every other week at the Newington Senior Center. So, that being said, that's pretty much where we are with our marketing, and I think we have pretty much all the bases covered. As I said, our next biggest challenge is really how the new, the new payment model for Medicare is going to impact us, and it's going to impact everybody. I mean, everyone's going to the same, there are all sorts of conferences and webinars. We've attended as many as we can. We do all the coding, the diagnosis coding for our VNA, for our patients. So we've had to go out and get updated on all the new coding. There will be a whole new package of coding changes for the new payer model. And the difference is now it's not based on services, it's based on patients' diagnosis and their acuity and how sick they are. So we have to have our documentation, so we had someone come in yesterday and present a documentation seminar for our staff. What we're doing, what the, the biggest impact is that our revenue cycle for billing in the VNA is going from a 60-day cycle to a 30-day cycle. So it impacts every single person that works in the agency, from the office staff to the staff getting their documentation completed, to us getting it coded and reviewed, and to getting out to billing. So, and that's facing every home care agency everywhere. Accuracy of diagnostic coding, I'm not concerned with that. Like I said, I think we're on track with everything. We have educated our billing department, our billing staff, and our office staff on what we need to do to, to speed up our revenue cycle. And we've educated our staff on the accuracy of documentation, how much more of an impact it's going to have now. And then, you know, our census, in numbers, which we have always been looking at, our average daily census. Now, what's really going to be impacted or what's really going to be reflected with the new payment model is an unduplicated census. So it's new patients, it's turnover. It's, so it's not like you can just take patients and just keep them, because they're, you're going to be paid differently. So it's really understanding the, the current model and what the changes mean for January. But I did speak with, I have been speaking with our representative from Qualidime, which is our health, home health consulting agency. They do all of our quarterly audits, they do our 120-day report, our annual report. And we've looked at different areas that we need to, what needs to be in place. And she also gave me contact information for someone who is named Melanie Stover. She's a co-owner of home care sales in Alabama. I guess she was, she was at the administrative, administrators conference in Las Vegas in this past May. And her focus is really on small agencies that are being impacted by the new payment model. So she has some really good ideas and some good tactics that work, so. I think we're, I think we're on track, and we're just kind of at the mercy now of, you know, what happens in January, what happens with Medicare. And I think as long as we have all of our, you know, pieces in place, you know, we can hope for the best and hope to be one of those small agencies that survive it.
I would assume with the, why everyone's worried about the new Medicare model would be that, is it assumed that the reimbursement rates will be less?
Yes. Yes, it's going to change, so that 30-day cycle, which used to be a 60-day cycle for reimbursement, you'll get reimbursed for 30 days, and then the second 30 days will be on a different, at a different reimbursement rate.
Probably lower.
Lower. And, and that's kind of in general. There are a lot of other things that are impacting that, but in general, all in all, it's looking like it's going to be less of a reimbursement, at least for smaller agencies. That's what Medicare does. They, you know, I mean, and, and usually what happens, you know, following Medicare's changes, then you'll see other insurance agencies, the managed Medicare's, the, you know, private insurances follow suit in some way. They make adjustments, which they do every year anyway, so.
Do you think that the, you know, I, you know, there's a lot of healthcare companies in Connecticut that are buying up hospitals and, you know, consolidating, I get, I'm sure it's for cost's sake. And do you think like the, the person in the, what's the person in the hospital that, when you discharge?
Discharge planners.
Or, I mean, do they, do they, I would assume they work for a particular company and perhaps favor that company since they're all under one roof, or is that not happened? I'm just curious how that.
Well, that does happen, and I think it's, it's based on the fact that they do have, you know, large hospitals have bought up, and we know that. It's happened in this portion of the state, it's happened in the southern part of the state.
Everywhere, really, yeah.
Everywhere, so that you have your biggest corporations, and they are, you know, they have their own skilled nursing facilities or rehab facilities, and their own home care agencies. So, basically, that's what happens, and, and there's a really good side to that. The philosophy of it is good, they're in a continuum, they kind of stay in that healthcare system. But again, the focus there too is to just make sure that that's the patient's choice. But, you know, it's, that's pretty much how it, it plays out. But some of the things, some of the things that Melanie addressed are, are good things, are things that we have in place. And one is to, one is patient loyalty, and we do have that. That's one of the things about Berlin that is very evident. We do have patient loyalty in terms of them coming back to us and word of mouth and that type thing. And we have a, you know, always have a consistently five-star patient satisfaction rating, so that goes a long way, so we're good there.
Well, thanks for that, and did, did you say that the, we're down to, I mean, down to, I mean, it's still, the amount is that we're over our budget is down to 500,000?
Yeah, 700 the year before.
We're 700, eh? Were we up to almost a million the year before that?
So it's going in the right direction.
Yes, yes.
Slow, but it's going.
It's going in the right direction at least.
On the right way.
And I understand we have to wait for the new rules, so.
So I do have a few questions. Over the summer, I heard the census dropped into the 50s, is that correct?
At one period of time, I think the lowest we went was maybe 58, but it was, might be for a couple of days. We've still been around that 60, between, in that 60 to 70 margin.
And what is it today?
60.
60. So I have a couple other questions. In terms of your Medicare population, what's your payer mix? What's the percentage of Medicare patients that you have?
Our Medicare, let's see, I do a report monthly for Kevin. I don't have right off the top of my head, but I want to say our Medicare is about, straight, traditional Medicare or Medicare and managed? Straight Medicare is about 45 to 50%.
So that's a, you know, not a great percentage, considering that's the, pretty much the top payer. I know some of the Medicare Advantage plans do pay comparable to Medicare. What other, another question I have is what's your productivity? With a census of 60, what's your productivity?
Our productivity has been, well, during the summer months, again, you have staff that are out, you have vacations, so productivity looks good. Right now, we're seeing, we're more, you know, with, with a full staff back at hand, but what we're doing is we're providing these, you know, putting staff in charge of marketing and doing some projects for educational-type projects and keeping up with the educational material on documentation and that kind of thing.
So what is it?
We are, but we are looking at, we're still at about, above 90%, probably around 95% productivity, even though, because prior to that, I mean, when our census is around 70, we're up in the high 90s.
What does that equate to visits per day?
Five, five to six is what we, is what we, our goal is, five to six visits a day.
Because typically what I'm hearing for the state of Connecticut, the average now is eight, and a lot of agencies are at seven, so that.
It does happen, yeah. Not consistently, and I don't, I don't propose that because of the documentation changes. In fact, I just read an article in Home Health Lines that specifically says how the, the new payment system and the new COPS have really impacted productivity. So it's, you know, I don't propose it because there's such, going to be such a focus on accuracy in our documentation in so many different levels, that, you know, making an expectation of seven or eight is really going to show in that documentation, so it's a really fine line.
I also, when I looked at what you had written in terms of where you're going, I, I mean, it's, it's wonderful that you're trying to get the word out, but what I wonder is if some emphasis can be placed on physicians' offices and non-system partners, like SNFs or assisted livings. I'll be honest with you, I worked for 10 years at a senior center, and you're not going to get referrals from a senior center.
No, and I thought I mentioned it, that, that's what our clinical nurse and our office marketing person are doing. But Jennifer and I are going out to the doctor's offices and the skilled nursing facilities. We were just asked by Middlewoods, one of the assisted living facilities, if they could utilize us as a preferred provider. Met with the director there, so we're, we're kind of handling that part of it and going over the referral part of it and the services that we provide. But we are definitely, we go out probably at least weekly and, and visit various doctor's offices and facilities.
And then do you also in turn keep data as to where the referrals are coming from?
We do, yes.
Wonderful. Okay.
Hey, any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you, Wendy.
Good luck moving forward. It seems very challenging, but you guys seem to be definitely working at it, so we appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Item number five?
Number five, yes.
This is a request, a bid waiver from John Zach, it's to do with the irrigation system, the Imberlin Gulf Coast, and to provide some background.
Good evening.
Hey, John.
How are you?
Hello.
We generally don't expend this much in funds for irrigation service calls, but due to a lot of wire tracking issues, either whether it be 120 volt or communication wire, we've had more service calls than normal. And those, those wire tracking issues are generally due to lightning strikes within the system. There's approximately five miles of 120 volt wire and about five miles of communication wire in the ground. So that's one of the, that's the main reason why, that's a big driver of this increase this year.
As long as no person's getting struck, I guess we're okay, as long as nothing else is happening, but interesting. Okay, any questions for John? Any none, take a motion?
Okay, I move to waive the town's bidding procedure for Anderson Irrigation to supply parts and services as needed since they have a strong working knowledge of the irrigation system in an amount not to exceed $15,000, since this is the best interest of the town.
Second, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Any none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. All right, thanks, John.
Thank you.
For six.
Item number six, we have a bit of presenters here to talk about the transit, winter development, and we talked about this a lot. You've seen a lot of remediations and easements and so many other things happening with various segments. I thought it'd be good for all of us to sort of have a little history, give us your sense of where we are and how we plan to get to the finish line, and hopefully have a hole in the ground or some cranes very soon. So I'll turn it over to Jim and Chris to kick it off.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we're gonna, what we thought we'd do, if you agree with Jim Mahoney, Economic Development Coordinator, if you're agreeable, we're gonna try to use the TV. And we're just gonna put up some images that kind of reflect what's happening with the project that we can refer to. And then at the end, call everybody back. We have, we have, this is a discussion item, but we have been working on funding issues, and we do have a motion we'd like you to consider. If you, we can discuss it, and if it's something that you want to consider further, we can take it up next meeting, but we'll put it on the table and explain why we're, why we're doing that, so. Everybody wants to retire to the audience?
Yes, we will.
This is.
Yes.
Take that with you, exactly what will be on the.
The screen?
So that you have.
The big screen? Okay, all right.
First time I've used it, I don't know. We'll see, we'll see. It may take a minute to wind up here. Keep an eye on this, and then I'll start, I'll just start talking, and then.
Yep.
So.
Say, do we need to actually turn that?
Yeah, we'll turn on the TV once we get it set. TV right here, yeah. Okay. So, obviously you've been getting briefings on the project as we, as we've gone along, but we're kind of at a, at a critical point to try to drive it home and get it under construction. I think we, we all know that there's a lot of complications with this project, which we described to you when you initially authorized the contract with, with Newport Realty Group in April. And then we signed, signed our contract to sell the properties at 861, 889, 903, and 913 Farmington Avenue to Newport, and we signed that contract in April. So there's been a lot of work that's been going on since April, the, we. The, we have obviously a team of people working with Mark Lovely and Tony Valenti, but on the town staff, Mark and Mike and Oroch and Chris and I, and, you know, certainly Jeff, you know, is, is, you know, everybody's been working on it. It's, as I say, there's some complications. It's not a straightforward transaction as, as we know. But we're making progress, we're, and, and the goal, general goal is that Newport has submitted their site plan to planning and zoning. And the public hearing is later this week. We're hoping for an approval in beginning of October. And then we have permits that we need from the Connecticut Department of Transportation, because Farmington Avenue is a state road. So we have, we have the curb cuts and connections into the sanitary, into the storm sewage system that we need from DOT. And then we're working on both the environmental remediation of ADD9 Farmington Avenue and on the Boulevard project, which are the two town responsibilities here. And the Boulevard project, we have a funding shortfall that has been a challenge. We're starting to fill that shortfall, and we'll give you an update on that tonight. And with the remediation project, we have two aspects to that project, to that, to the remediation. One is the, is the soil remedy. We have contaminated soils, and we have long ago received an engineered control variance approval from the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to allow us to put a cap or a liner over that contaminated soil onsite to eliminate the potential for direct exposure to that soil. So that's our soil remedy. That, in a general sense, that's set, but in the details, we're, we're working on it, which we'll discuss. And then the second piece is the remediation of the groundwater, which we've documented that the groundwater is migrating off-site. So we've been considering lots of, lots of approaches to remediation of the groundwater. And our, our main objective is to see if we can find a solution that doesn't involve an active remediation remedy. If we can, we can do it through other means, which we've been pursuing, and we'll get into that a little bit. But first, that's kind of the site and the various parcels, and that's the current site plan. And I'd like Mark and Tony just to give us a brief update on where the project, where the project stands and their concept.
Good evening, everyone. Mark Lovely, Principal with Newport Realty Group, just gonna give you an update on basically where we are. We've submitted to planning and zoning. We are on for the public hearing this Thursday evening, looking to get approval hopefully in beginning of October. Just giving you an overview, not much has changed since last time that we were, we were before you. Basically, we've got, who's it, right there, okay, got it, is it not gonna hit on the TV, okay, it's not gonna go onto the TV. Okay, we've got the building that's gonna be Building A, which is if we look on that, it's the farthest one to the right-hand side on Farmington Avenue. That one there is 10,800 square feet. That's gonna be medical slash professional office, which is right in there. Building B, which is to the left side of the brand-new Boulevard, is gonna be consisting of about 20,600 square feet. We've got about 6,800 square feet of retail on the first floor, and then there's two layer, two levels of apartments above it, 12 one-bedrooms and four two-bedrooms. Like I said, total square footage is 20,600 square feet. We've got Building C, which is behind that, which is gonna be a 1,600 square foot retail building, something like a coffee shop or a deli or something like that that'll service the area. Then we go back into where we have Buildings D and E, which are the total of 60 apartment units, the two buildings, 30 in each one, with a center courtyard that has a common area room, a little kitchenette for the meetings and stuff like that, and a workout room in the middle vestibule. That right there, each building's about 25,500 square feet. We've got a total of 42 one-bedrooms and 18 two-bedrooms. And there, we're gonna take and we're gonna lift that building up. The parking will be underneath with a vapor system that'll get rid of the remediation underneath that. And then we have 861 that we're working on. That one there's about 2,100 square feet, has an apartment on the second floor and retail on the first floor. We're excited. Staff has been great to work with. We, we've had some bumps in the road, but we just keep going and get through them, and gotta get this thing to fruition, so we're excited about it, definitely. And any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
The apartments, what is the approximate square footage?
Apartments, okay, so what we're looking at is approximately 600 to 650 square feet on the one-bedrooms and about 950 square feet on the two-bedrooms. All market rate, actually, I got a call from a citizen this today wanting to make sure that we're market rate. I would put that on the, no, no affordable.
And they're just one floor?
One floor, exactly. All the buildings will be, the Buildings B, D and E will all be elevator sprinkler, everything.
For the retail and medical, do you have any tenants you're considering putting in there already, or?
Just through it being in the newspaper, it's funny, we have had calls already. We are, and I can put it out there now, we are under contract for across the street now for Depot Square, so we're gonna be looking at doing that first, probably putting a sales office in there, so we'll be ahead of the game, marketing that and bringing people over to here. So we're excited about that.
Why aren't you successful?
We're very committed to the area. And I'll just show you, I'll hold up over here, we have, do have a rendering of what the project will look like now.
We have, we have a slide here for that.
Actually, it's a new one, we have it.
Oh, we don't have that one?
This is the newest.
That one?
No. Yeah, actually, we did change the architecture a little bit.
Okay.
And I'll hold it up over here.
I can do that.
We did change up...
With some of the comments from planning and zoning, where they wanted it to look a little bit more residential and less commercial, we have added some roof facades, some, some awnings and stuff like that to match some of the other buildings along Farmington Avenue, using a hardy plank board and everything like that. So we've put some new elements in it to make it look more like a downtown instead of just a regular development.
Sure, the backside, that looks cool, too.
Yeah, so that's, that's actually the apartment building on the other side, so. Thank you.
Perfect.
All right, thank you. Just put in my quick economic development plug. This project, we are actually very blessed. Most projects mixed use, if you look at the one in Rocky Hill on Route 3, that's kind of the model. That's three to 4% commercial, this is 24% commercial. So we're getting a great opportunity here, not just the residential, but the commercial as well. And I'm working very closely with both Tony and Mark on trying to find new opportunities, particularly places we can go from Town Hall to go eat lunch.
And I think the, the thing I would stress is, again, it's really been a partnership with Newport and the town. There's a lot of, there's a lot of challenges to this project, and, you know, if we had been working with a different, different type, different developer, I think it'd be hard to work through all those challenges. I think we were trying to stay on the same team. We're trying to achieve this result, and sometimes, you know, things come up or things evolve, and you have to come up with solutions, and we work together to try to, to meet the challenges. And we're still working through some, working through those, and I'll talk a little bit about some of those before the end. So one of the, one of our challenges is, is the groundwater contamination. And, sure, and you can see from the slide here that, that shows the direction of the groundwater flow. And it's basically from, from the north to the, it goes, follows southwest to 861, coming off of the 889 site. And, go back to this for one second. So what we're trying, what we are trying to do, we first had an approach where we wanted, we, there were two sites that we had, two off-site locations where we had hit exceedances in the groundwater testing that we did. One was 861 Farmington Avenue, and we bought, and we bought that building and that property, and we're gonna file environmental land use restrictions on that before we transfer to Newport, so that we can control through that mechanism. And basically with the contaminated groundwater is contaminated with volatile organic chemicals. And so the concern is really that the volatilization, those, those chemicals volatilizing, and that you get a vapor, you know, in, in the buildings. So we did testing on both of, both the 861 and next door at 873. We had negative testing. You know, we didn't have any vapor issues with either building. But in 861, there is a basement that is kind of below the groundwater level. We have a sump pump. So you, the vapor testing that we've done to date is not conclusive in terms of not having a vapor problem. So we want, we were looking for a final answer on the vapor problem, which I'll, I'll discuss a little bit more. So we're looking at, generally on the groundwater for, so, yeah, let me talk about the vapor for a second. So that's been a recent issue that has come up, and Lorero, who's our environmental consultant, came up with some suggestions about sealing the basement, you know, raising the floor to, you know, bring it up above the groundwater table, limiting the sump pump, which would require us to do other things like raise electrical services and, and lift sewer and water connections and such. So this has been something we've been working at just in the last couple of weeks. We got those recommendations. Newport met with Lorero, with town staff, Mike and Frank Van Linter last week, assessed the situation. Lorero is now developing a better spec for what work they think is necessary. Then Newport's gonna come up with some cost estimates. We'll see where that is, and then we'll come back to you with, you know, what our recommendation is. In our, in general, our approach is that we felt like the best, the most efficient way, if we can, if we can implement now a vapor solution for 861, that'll kind of put that issue behind us. We're gonna have to keep on testing for it or, or, you know, anything like that. And it'll be part, perhaps part of our groundwater solution. So what we would like to do is, when we determine the numbers, if we think that's the best route to go, look at a price adjustment and have, you know, Newport do the work, because it's gonna be more efficient and quicker than have us do the work and bid, go through the bid process, et cetera. And we, our goal is to get the building in Newport's hands as soon as possible, but we have to, we have to overcome this option, this obstacle, excuse me. So then, we've been looking at, we've had Lorero looking at various, what we call active groundwater measures. This is not our first choice, but we, you've heard, I think, before hydraulic control system, which would, you know, a couple of these diagrams, like top left and top right, our groundwater control system diagrams. So what we'd be doing is kind of capturing the, the groundwater before it leaves the site or when it goes on, direct it to 861 and capture it on 861, since we can deal with that. And again, our environmental land use restrictions. And we capture the water, we treat the water, and then discharge this treated water into the, into the sanitary sewer system. So that's one option. The downside of the option, of that option is that we probably have to operate that system for many years in the future. It's not, it's not likely to be quickly self-cleaning. And, you know, we have the cost not only of the capital cost, the operating cost of running the pumps, et cetera, and the cost of discharging into the sanitary sewer system. So that's one option. Another option is, is the bottom left, illustrated, call it air sparging, where we're, you know, pushing, pumping air through the groundwater and getting it to volatilize and then capturing the vapors and treating them if necessary before we release the vapors. Again, it's an active system, you gotta, you have electricity, electric cost for the pumps, and have to continue, you know, continue to operate it over a longer period of time. So we're, we've been racking our brain to keep on thinking about ways not to have an active system. And originally, the most recent obstacle, I think we shared with you, is we thought, with the, we had a different strategy. We're dealing with 861 and 873, but then when we found, we put three wells in Farmington Avenue, as you know, and in one of those wells, we had a, an exceedance for one of the volatile organic chemicals that are originating at the 889 site. So we know that they extend beyond the site, so then initially we were making the assumption that, that we're gonna have to treat with either the hydraulic control or the air sparging, right? So now, the good news is that Newport is buying Depot Crossing, and lo and behold, Depot Crossing seems to be, is across the street from 861 and seems to be in the direction of the groundwater flow. So now we, and now we maybe have an option to put wells in, in front of 861 and see if it's extending into that property. Depot Crossing, right, oh, excuse me, yes, into the Depot Crossing property, sorry. So, and if it's not extending into the Depot Crossing property, then we're gonna go back to trying to work the avoidance program for the hydraulic control system or the active, active remediation system for the groundwater. So now, you know, fortunately, we're presented with another option. Chris and I and met with Lorero today, our consultant, we talked about that. They're gonna develop a proposal, we expect probably to bring to you the next meeting, to, to fund the wells across the street, and we're gonna take a look at that. So one of the things, so the other thing, obviously, as I said, we've got to do this soil, soil cap. And that's better defined, but we're still working on the edges of that, and this is kind of just a general soil testing information. So in this diagram, we have kind of the, the basic outline of where we think we have to cap the site. If I go back, if I, let me see if I go forward here. So if I go forward to the site, 889 is kind of the yellow and the orange. So you can see that, that orange, and I'll get back to the orange, but the orange is kind of a, an extension that goes out to Farmington Avenue. So the manufacturing buildings weren't there, the soil is not as contaminated, and so we might be able to take a different approach there. So, and we've done, so we did supplemental sampling of those soils, and we think we can keep that area out of the cap. So that'll save us capital costs, make the cap smaller, but it'll have other benefits, too. So that's, this is, we've got two scenarios. One, we just kept that out of the front area. The second scenario, you see a little dink on the top where the Boulevard's going through. We did soil testing where the Boulevard's gonna go through the 889 parcel. And there were some minor contaminants, but we think we can manage those onsite. It's in one area. Shift the soils and not cap that area of the site. So if we don't have to cap under the Boulevard, it's gonna simplify the construction process for the Boulevard, also simplify future maintenance of the liner, as well as obviously saving the cost of putting the liner under the Boulevard. So some of the tests that you approved recently have proved to be productive. We got some good news. We haven't always gotten good news when we got the samples for this site, but we got some good news lately. So this is, this is kind of the direction we're going with the, with the cap. So one of the other, one of the things we go back to, we had in our conversation today, and again, this is all kind of evolving, but we were talking, our theory earlier this week, say, was that with the timing of the project, we needed to, you know, the theory is, again, approvals beginning of October, permitting, you know, maybe in, you know, by the end of October from DOT. Then we would look to bid the projects, both the Boulevard and the remediation in October, award the bids third week of November, you know, and then everything can move forward. And I just reiterate or state that one of the conditions of the Newport project, and we have phasing, which we'll talk about, but the, is that the town build the Boulevard. So we've got to award, award the Boulevard in order to affect the transfer of 903 and 913 Farmington Avenue to Newport to let them start the project. So, you know, all these things have to work together. So one of the problems is, is, you know, obviously, we're still dealing with this, what do we do with the groundwater? And what we thought was we were gonna have multiple options in the bid document that, for the air sparging or the hydraulic control system. And then we would probably be starting construction of the, of the liner work in the, in the spring. And then we would probably be starting construction of the, of the liner work in the, in the spring. And these, both of these systems require, some of the systems are going to be below the liner. So before we put the liner down, we have to, we have to install the piping and such for the systems. And that was, that was a really timing dilemma for us. And then as we were talking to Lorero today, and when you look back at the locations for the hydraulic control system or the air sparging, obviously, they're right at the property border. So now what we're thinking is we're going to pull the line, we're, we're going to pull the liner back or not do the liner in the area that we would have to do the active controls. So then we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to have both of those options in the bid document at this point. We don't have to construct all these things under the liner, which hopefully we'll never need. So Lorero in our conversations today, they think, they think that that can work. Obviously, this is, you know, subject to change, but, but that was good news. So again, I think we're still pursuing, the long and the short of it is we're still pursuing this not having an active groundwater remediation system. And there's some, you know, lights at the end of the tunnel, but we're not there yet. And, but.
Phases of the boulevard?
Phases of the boulevard, yes.
Phases and boulevard, just to go through.
Yeah, so the phases, again, we've got, we've got, phase one is the green, which is 903 and 913, which was buildings A, B, and C, as, as Mark was discussing, the two, you know, commercial buildings and the mixed, the commercial building and the mixed-use building. And those are, as you can see, they're outside of 889, so they weren't involved with the remediation. So those were things that Newport could get going first. We structured the contract with Newport so that it could be phased and then I'd have to acquire all the properties at the same time. So they'd first acquire those two properties. As the site planning process evolved, we realized that some of the service entrances for the buildings in phase one were on that orange area, which we're calling now Phase 1D, which is actually on 889 Farmington Avenue. So we had to, we had to figure out a way to allow that to happen, which, you know, again, what Jeff and I have worked with Newport on is the concept of we'd give them a license and allow them to construct those. The, excuse me, put that back. So that's the path we're going down at this point. And the, you know, again, what happened is that with the, the beneficial soil test results that we got, we were able to pull the liner away from that area so that, you know, we can, they can move forward with it and they don't have to wait for us to do the liner. So that seems to be working. So we got some, again, good news, good news, but still challenges. What else? So we got, I'm going to go back to the site plan for a second and just talk about easements and then I'll go back to the last. So with the, with this site, there are, there are a couple of easements, which we, again, talked about within the original contract on 913 Farmington Avenue. There's an existing easement to the benefit of 921 Farmington Avenue that allows them access and egress. And we've asked them to relocate the easement so it fits our site plan. As you can see, then it goes in the driveway rather than through the parking spaces. As, as you know, they gave us a letter and they're agreeable to that. We just have to, we had to get to this point in the site planning process. We're developing a, an easement agreement to shift the easement. And once we review that with the owners, Amco, we will have a survey. We've already, you know, contracted for the survey of the easement area. So we'll have the area surveyed and we can, you know, we can sign up to get this, this easement area relocated. That's a condition of the deal. We can't, you know, we can't do this site plan unless we relocate that easement. Then we have a second easement, which we've discussed with the council, and this would be an easement we would be granting to the benefit of the adjacent building at 883 Farmington Avenue, which has the, you know, hairdresser bill, hairdresser use that's been in there many years. And they've, you know, their customers have parked on the parking next door, which is really on the 889 site. And we wanted to try to accommodate that historic, you know, situation and also, you know, provide them access to the rear of their building. And again, reflecting the kind of partnership we have with Newport and our agreement with Newport, they've, you know, they've agreed to honor that easement. What we'll do is we'll record the easement before we, before we close with Newport on the, on the 889 property in X phase, which we'll talk about. But we'll close on that. We'll file the easement. And so that Newport will be obligated to follow the terms of the easement, which basically would provide for the 83 building to use the parking spaces that are immediately adjacent to the building and also have access to the driveway for access and egress to their site. One of the things that we, we realized that during the, during the planning process, initially, that entrance driveway on 889 next to 883, can you point that out, Chris? That driveway was a two-way in and out. And then we had met with the Connecticut Department of Transportation in July and they asked us to make that driveway one-way in only. So then, then the easement area for the benefit of 883 then has to extend all the way up to the boulevard so that their customers can act, can exit the site. So we've kind of defined, we've defined that situation and again, we're working on the And just to, you know, to point out our other challenge, which is, has been the boulevard. And this is an illustration of the original plan for the boulevard, which is in gray, and the new plan, which is in orange, shows the location was shifted. Some of the reason for the increased cost is a longer boulevard and other factors, you know, time has intervened. We're doing, you know, more utility work and other considerations. I know, Mark, you want to tell us why we want this, this other boulevard situation?
Sure. I think it's.
It's, it kind of shows the cooperative planning. I guess the short of it is nice corner buildings make nice downtown areas and by moving the boulevard over, we could have two corner buildings. It'll enhance the streetscape on both Farmington Avenue and the boulevard. It provides more opportunities for people to engage the streetscape and walking on the sidewalks around the buildings, the corner of the buildings. It provide more opportunity to have outdoor patio area, outdoor dining that can be viewed and enjoyed by both people traversing the boulevard and Farmington Avenue. And it just, it provided a better downtown.
So the last challenge is funding for the boulevard. And for various reasons, again, the cost estimate that was developed by our consultant, WMC, indicated about a $900,000 shortfall. And, you know, we did talk about this, again, with the council way back when. And we've been pursuing, we've been pursuing the additional state funding for the project, both through new state grants and for reauthorization or reapropriation of existing grants. And the status is we've gotten, we asked for the approval to use program income from the sale of 861 Farmington Avenue in, for the boulevard, and that's approved, although we might not have a lot of sale income. So we're not counting on that strongly for solving our problem. Second thing is we asked for the reprogramming of the funds from the train station project, where we had, remembering that we had grants for the train station project for the renovation of both the parking lot and the station. And the town turned $500,000 over to the state of Connecticut to complete that project and the, the station burned down. So there was some remaining money. The amount was undetermined for a long time and, but we had gotten authorization from the state to reprogram that money for the boulevard. And one, that was one of the major pieces that we thought would help fill the gap. However, we weren't, for a long time, we weren't getting any response about the specific number. So today, we, we got some feedback. We think that that number is going to be around 290,000. So that's going to help. We're going to have to go through a process. We'll talk about this more, but again, that's approved. We have a number now, so that's good. We, in the meantime, as we didn't get this number until today, especially, we've been pursuing other possibilities. And one of the, one of the key options is reprogramming some of our responsible growth grants. So we got two responsible growth grants. One was for the acquisition of 861 Farmington Avenue and acquisition of the Conrail spur. And the second was primarily for remediation of the Conrail spur. And at this point, we haven't made a deal to buy the properties with Conrail because we're at an impasse over just investigations of environmental issues and third-party liability relief. So this is a lot, this is a, you know, a project that's ready to go. We have the approvals for that, that project, but we don't have a deal with Conrail. So we feel that it's a higher priority to spend the money, you know, reprogram the money for the boulevard and then we'll have a lesser amount that may be available for the Conrail spur in the future. And we did, we did send Conrail a revised proposal to acquire a lesser part of the, of the spur or to just acquire an easement across the spur. Because our primary goal in acquiring the spur is to provide access, a second means of access from Farmington Avenue to the Burl and Steele site north of, of the spur, which is 13.7 acres and is a major future redevelopment opportunity, not a present possible, not a present project, but a real future important project. So we still certainly could accomplish the easement or probably the smaller acquisition with the funds that would be remaining. We have about $500,000 that's, that's been committed for the Conrail piece, $185,000 for, for the acquisition and 325, most of the 325 for, for the remediation. So our recommendation is that the town, the town council authorize us to make the request to the Office of Policy Management to reprogram those funds as needed for the, for the boulevard project. The site, the other piece of that is, is that as we discussed initially with the funding gap with the boulevard, we are going to be getting program income from the sale of 903 and 913 Farmington Avenue, which is, which is $460,000. So one of the, and we had a meeting with the state representative, Speaker Eric Simowitz and Office of Policy Management yesterday, discussed this, you know, reprogramming, additional funding, all these issues. And they want to know what, you know, what additional funds the town is going to commit. And we had talked before about, you know, kind of our last resort is using the program income from the sale of 903 and 913 for this project for the boulevard. And so I think what we're recommending is that the town council authorize us to request the reprogramming of the Conrail grants and to indicate that the town council supports the use of, of the program income from the sale of 903 and 913 Farmington Avenue for the boulevard, if necessary, as a gap, as gap funding to, to finish the job, subject to approval of the Board of Finance. So with that, sorry for the length, but it's a little bit complicated, you know, you can see, but hopefully that kind of gives you an update, comprehensive update of what's happening. We wanted to get a chance to talk about some of these nitty-gritty issues because we're going to be coming back to you, you know, for approvals of different pieces of implementing these things. And we want, we want you to be on board as, in, as we go along the process and our thought process and why we're going and the directions we're going. And we'll come back for the specific approvals that we need. But tonight, it's just on the, again, the funding issue. But with all that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer or any of the other stuff.
So the money.
Yes, the money.
Vote on tonight.
Yes.
Excuse me, all in between you've got to be talking.
Yeah.
Why don't you guys go back up?
Okay.
And the presentation to where I might.
It was kind of fun to be in the audience and stand on the microphone chain, you know, instead of, we're, we're on the hot seat all the time, right?
I was going to say the fun stuff, I talked to be your wife the other night.
Did you watch the other day?
Oh, I don't know.
Is that mine?
Yeah, exactly.
So, the money.
The money.
About the money. Always, right? Always about the money.
And again, if this, I know we're springing this on you, so if you want time to reflect, but it's something that we've talked about before and we just think strategically, you know, if we know that the town council's on board.
Thank you.
That it's going to help us sell the additional funding from the state.
With the money, actually, Jim and I have been working closely on looking at what we have and/or what we might be able to repurpose. Good news for the last two days, a couple of things. One would be the repurposing of the $460,000, which is the money from 903 and 913. We do still have some monies within the grant itself. The, because of the change from police station to we're not sure to this, our consultant has had to put a lot of effort into it. So I don't know, pick a number, 300,000 plus or minus.
Yeah, we have about, I guess we have about 360,000 from the initial grant, still in the construction line item.
Yep.
From the initial 500,000 we got for the boulevard.
Yep, so 360 then with that. And then this 290, we may or may not see it immediately, but potentially could be part of the mix. And then now with the reprogramming potentially of these two grants, it looks like we're either at or pretty close to the number we need to be at. Where OPM is with it is OPM initially, reading the tea leaves, OPM was not real interested in giving us more money, just to give us money. The conversation today, or yesterday, I should say, was, yes, we have these grants, we've given it to you basically for the area. They were designated, again, for the more, the rail spur and 861. And the big thing from them was, is, well, yes, this is the money, what are you locally doing? Which is why you're asking, we're asking you this evening to say, yes, we want to use that money for the boulevard. Again, it's, I believe that the way it's written is with, if the state does what we ask them to do at this point and really will help us make the gap, knowing the fact that this may be a way to do it without having to go back and find additional monies. I mean, it's, it's good news in my mind because I think even as of last week, we were kind of had our hands up in the air. And I think there's a solution here that can definitely work for everybody.
So, so all that money that we're talking about reprogramming, the total cost of the boulevard is what?
Between a million three and a million four.
Okay, so with all that reprogramming and we're at, what, about eight or 900?
We figure we're at about 900 and then there may be about another 40,000 from a grant we had gotten for sidewalks. So let's call it 940, 950. And then if we can get the other half million dollars reprogrammed from those two grants, we would be at the number, and again, the 290,000.
Would be there.
Changes are pretty good. They may say, yes, we may not see it for a while, but it's nice to know we finally have a number because we've been working with almost nothing. But I think we're, we're pretty close on what we have at this point with the numbers. It's just working with OPM to help us get there.
Just to, I think, you know, we tried to press on the state agencies in our meetings is that, you know, if we're coming, we come to you in November, November 19th, we say we want to award the bid for the boulevard, we got to know where the money's coming from.
Yeah.
So, you know, they've got, we've got to tell you it's coming from this grant, it's coming from this source, it's coming from that source. So they, we need, you know, we need answers, we need solutions. And we've been pushing on a lot of, you know, we've been exploring a lot of possibilities, but now it's narrowing down and we're trying to drive it home and get it done.
Let's do it.
Yeah, no, that's good. I just wanted to be clear on that, so.
The idea would be at this point is that you're going to add to the agenda. All right, so Jeff and I, we worked the motion a little bit.
Yep, I see that.
So I would suggest that you make a motion to add the word into the agenda and then at that point you can, and discuss it and vote on it.
Motion's already on our agenda here, right, or no?
No, there's no.
No, no.
That was just a summary.
We introduced, we handed out a copy, but then Jeff.
He just changed.
It improved it a little bit. Okay. No, there's no.
No, no.
That was just a summary.
We introduced, we handed out a copy, but then Jeff.
He just changed.
A little bit. Kate.
Yeah. The word out, added another word, looks like, right?
That's all.
That's all.
It's clarified.
Simple. It's always simple.
Okay, so let's make a motion. We're going to make a motion to add.
Okay.
The motion.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to add to the agenda, I guess we'll call it 6A. The following motion to vote on, move to allocate the proceeds from the sale of 903 and 913 Farmington Avenue for the use of the Boulevard project to help fill a portion of the estimated funding shortfall, subject to securing adequate state funds to close the funding gap and to, and subject to the review and approval of the Board of Finance.
Second.
Okay. We're adding that on. Okay, so all of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's added to our agenda. Now we, now any discussion, so we'll take a motion, but yes, before motion?
When this Boulevard, or driveway, whatever is originally proposed, it was critical that it go forward years ago because the train station needed the infrastructure. Does this $1.4 million we're going to spend, is that just to get a piece of pavement on the ground, or is that going to support the train station somehow like it was explained to us years ago?
So it certainly, you know, continues to be an alternate means of access and egress to the train station. So it's a second means of access and egress to the train station. I think importantly, you know, you know, right away, the other thing it does is that right now, you know, Burl and Steel's access from Farmington Avenue is Depot Road. So now you got a major parking lot, you know, for the train station and, you know, people coming in for the trains and stuff, whereas, you know, Burl and Steel, obviously, their, their trucks, their people, and, you know, there's all that traffic on Depot Road. So this is going to take that, you know, take that pressure off of, of Depot Road. So I think, you know, the, it does, it does serve that. And then again, even without, you know, even without the immediately having a contract with Conrail, we're providing in the plan, you can see we have the stub for the connection into the Burl and Steel property. So we're making the provisions for that future, you know, opportunity as well.
I understand that. I just, it was originally touted that we needed this thing because they had to run electric lines and water lines to the train station. The train station couldn't happen without this driveway. And I understand the need for, for egress, for transportation, that's fine. I'm just curious, so we spend their money to support utilities for the train station?
Yeah, not, we're, the only utility, the train station's fully served by utilities. What we are doing is bringing the electric underground, so that when, you know, originally, and again, we've had these conversations with DOT, I don't know, we haven't concluded whether they actually made all the improvements, but the idea was, and the design of the train station parking lot, was that once we brought the underground electric service through the Boulevard, that they could get all the, you know, all the electric service on the train station parking lot site underground to the pole at the back of the site at, before the crossing, Conrail crossing. So everything, we can get all the rest of the, the electrical underground. We, they haven't confirmed that they've done that, but that was the way the whole project was planned. That, that's still our intent.
Thank you.
Go on, take a motion.
Okay. I move to allocate the proceeds from the sale of 903 and 913 Farmington Avenue for the use of the Boulevard project to help fill a portion of the estimated funding shortfall, subject to securing adequate state funds to close the funding gap, subject to the review and approval of the Board of Finance.
Second.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Have we none of us in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Hey, just one, one final question while Newport guys are here, just, so I get Steel Center at Farmington. I know it's Farmington Avenue, those of us that live in Berlin, but I, I just wonder, like, if we're looking for Steel Center in Farmington or in Berlin? I mean, I mean, sorry, that's just a thought that popped into my head, but what's, what's the rationale, Mark?
It's actually Steel Center at Farmington, because we want everybody to realize that it was on Farmington Avenue, and it was a destination to go to.
Right.
And I think the question was, is whether we call this Steel Boulevard or not, and that's still up in the air with, I think, you guys. That was one of the questions, I think, that was on the agenda tonight, right? If I remember correctly? So Thursday night?
But I mean, Steel, I mean, maybe I'm missing the point, but Steel Center at Farmington sounds like to me, we're in Farmington, the town of Farmington, not in Farmington Avenue. I mean, I understand it's Farmington Avenue. So I don't know, what everybody thinks about, I mean, I know it's probably, I don't, you know, I don't want to mess up your whole name.
That's something we could consider.
Right? It just, right, it just seems.
Believe me, we've had plenty meetings just about that, right?
Oh, I'm sure you, I, that's why I hesitate to even have to, I'm sure you've gone through all kind of machinations to get this name, but, but as I'm looking at it, I'm saying, wait, but Steel Center at Farmington, and you know, I understand.
Good point.
It sounds like it's in Farmington, Connecticut, not Berlin, Connecticut, to me. I mean, if someone's not familiar.
They might want to change it to Berlin.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, it was.
I get it.
The millennials made that suggestion? Oh, God, whether they know, no, I'm just kidding, just kidding. Yeah, oh, did he? Okay, well.
His first day.
His first day, well, there you go. Well, maybe that's the right name.
He must have been on vacation that day.
It's only been about four names since we started.
Really?
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I mean, it just.
It's a good point, though.
What have all of them been?
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, what are, what are the other names?
And we, we went back and forth with Farmington at Steel, we went back, we, we, we actually settled on Steel pretty quick because we hoped to be able to get into the Burl and Steel site down the road. Actually, we've had meetings with them, and that was basically the reason for the Steel, and then it's just like, what do we do? Is it the numbers of the buildings at Steel? Is it, so we're, we try to make it so it's a destination, that's why.
Yeah, I mean, Steel Center's great, but to me, Steel Center.
Drop to Farmington.
In the town of Farmington, that's what it.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Kind of the common.
And I'll be honest with you, that did not come up once.
Really?
Right?
Common sense is not so common anymore.
No, I know.
I, I don't know, it just seems.
Put the F, everybody knows.
Well, maybe.
It is a good point.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
It is a good point.
Uh, right?
Steel Center at the F?
At the F.
Well, maybe that.
Maybe changing it before, before Thursday night.
Maybe change it before all your documents go out.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, I don't know, I, I'm just, I know, I'm sure you've had many, so much input.
I'll be on the phone with you tomorrow.
That's a good idea.
That's a good point, though. I appreciate you bringing it up.
Yeah.
It is.
I mean, that's when I first thought Farmington, and of course, the dawn of means Farmington, but I'm like, at Farmington.
Steel Center at the Avenue sounds good.
That, that might be, that might be, that might be.
Yeah, what's the, are you a millennial?
No. No, he's too old.
Don't listen to millennials.
They don't, they don't even drive.
You might be too old to be a millennial, right? Are you too old? Are you a millennial?
Oh, that's a good point, though.
36, so what does that make me, a millennial? I think I'm on the cusp.
You might have missed.
Yeah, lucky.
I thought I'm millennials.
I give body parts to 30s.
Anyway.
The Avenue's a good idea. I like it.
All right, yeah, maybe we have a change then.
I appreciate it.
All right, if it works, yeah, thanks a lot, appreciate that.
We all want to succeed, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we're all good now? Where are we at now? Seven?
Preservation grant.
I'm going to turn this over to Kate about applying for a historic document preservation grant.
Yep.
Grant.
I'm very excited about this grant because it's the first time that we have reached outside of the town clerk's office, and Mike Herne from Public Works.
So thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everybody for coming. Chris, Jim, thanks for, appreciate it, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So this is the first time that we've reached out to other departments to see what we can do with this historic grant, and I'm going to let Mike talk about it because it's with the aerial maps from the 1950s.
Oh, okay. What do the millennials know about that? They know nothing about the 1950s.
I'm going to bring it over, actually. I think I'll bring it over. We have, so I'll just do it from here. We have 104 of these 1952 panels in our flat files in the engineering department, and I'm going to bring it closer, but if, if you look closer, you'll see that all the lot lines are on it, the labels, all those were hand-drawn on top of these. So this is, we have, they cover the entire town. So this to me, and previously, the 1926 aerials were like this, too. They were put on the GIS. If you go on the GIS website and you look on the map gallery, you can click on it, has an index map, so you can see where your house was, and then check out what was there before in the 20s. So, and these are starting to fall apart, so what we'd like to do is get them digitized, made PDFs, and they do it with a high-quality camera, like a sliding camera, so it's a little expensive, but I think it's worth it, because it'll basically, it's part of the history of the town.
Don't want to lose that.
Yeah. And the same company that did the 26 aerials, which came out great, was going to do this, this, these sets. So this will take care of two, about two-thirds of the set that we have, and then we'll finish it up next year.
The next grant we go for will include this to finish it up.
Peter, you know where it is? Come on. You know.
This is shuttle metal.
Okay, there you go, you figured it out.
This is, I guess, the Morland School, that was the original building that was there, and then they expanded and they put more buildings, so, and they put the town line, they put all the lot lines, they put, they have dimensions on the frontage and everything else, I mean, it's a street label, so. To lose this to me would be a.
Oh, no. What are they going to do with those specific panels?
We will keep them stored in our flat files.
Okay.
Unless the historic department or.
Doesn't suggest maybe hysterical society or historical. Like, like a crack at them if nothing else, you know?
Yeah, the whole idea of restoring them and everything is a whole huge process. And also, even in framing them or anything, because it's 144 panels.
It's 104.
144. So it would be, but the biggest thing is, as we always talk about business continuity, is once we have them digitized, like Mike said, you can see them on the GIS, they're available, so if anything does happen to Town Hall, we, we have that history. We have that.
Maybe, it'd be.
And there's a grant.
It'd be great if you could maybe restore a couple of big ones, right?
Yeah.
Maybe a couple of them, like the downtown, you know, center of town, maybe, I don't know. Just a couple, just a.
Because there's probably, and that's not a bad idea, Mayor, because there'll be money available, right now, as for 550, 5500.
$5,500, yeah.
And it changes every year. But if we're doing two-thirds this year, then some of that, we won't need that whole grant next year, so maybe we can identify some of the ones that are really.
Well, what we could, what we could do is, the first batch that we send, there'll be 64, we could do the, the more developed areas.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Of town versus down at Long Chain, Long Highway.
Right.
That's a, no.
I mean, it's, it probably, sorry, Charlie. Sorry, Charlie, yeah.
I mean.
You can always come to our office.
Train station.
Yeah.
I think that would be interesting.
So what we'll do is, we'll do that, that, like, East Berlin and the more developed areas, we'll try to get sort of maybe the northeast corner, or north, actually.
Farmington Avenue. Farmington, or Farmington Avenue, or whatever it is, yeah.
Definitely.
From our office, we'll, he'll be cherry picking out these, yeah.
I'm sorry, Michael.
No, it's okay. It's fine. No, we should, we have to lay them out anyway, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
You know that this document was put together by Kate, because the cost is $5,501, the grant is $5,500, it says the $1 will come from the town clerk. Every nickel is accounted for.
Wow, I guess so, Kate. Are we breaking your fund with taking a buck out of it? Was there two bucks in there now, probably?
Board of Finance.
I'm putting my 10 cents in.
There you go. All right, take a motion?
Okay, I move to authorize the town manager, Arocha, to apply for the historic documents preservation grant for the 2020 targeted grant, the amount of $5,500. Upon receipt, grant funds are to be deposited into the special grant fund account.
Second.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Have we none of us in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so move.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, thanks, Mike. Oops, where's our, the rest of our agenda, what's next? I lost it. All right, we're done with the numbers, right? Yeah, it was the, where are we at here? We are at town manager's report, yes.
Actually, I don't have anything this time.
Oh, wow, wow, thank you. Well, no, I'm sorry, that's terrible, no, that's terrible, that's terrible.
I mean, I could go on about.
Oh, no, no, it's okay.
Property tax.
Maybe, maybe another hour, we got to spare. What do you think, a couple hour, hour and a half, maybe?
The town is functioning well. And I know political agencies, I'll.
We're good. We're good. Okay, next.
You're probably tired from the turkey leg this weekend, I know, right? At the fair.
The fair. Special committee reports, of which I don't, there's not any, right? Is there any? I don't think we had any.
Nope.
Oh, here it is. Okay, so we'll move on from that. Counselor Communications, we are here. Any Counselor Communications? Anybody?
So I have something. Last time we met.
Yes.
For the town council, I had asked that we put the discussion about resolution on gun violence for this meeting, and it's not there.
Oh, yes.
So I'd like to know why.
We can talk about it now, if you'd like. I think we, did we, did we got a copy sent to us?
I had asked it to be on this agenda, so the minutes aren't correct, because I did ask for it to be on this agenda.
Oh, does it not say that in the minutes?
No.
Okay, I mean, that's why we missed it, then.
We did circulate it again to the whole group, but I was not sure whether that was.
Karen, this might be my fault, I wasn't at the last meeting. No, that's okay. But I went by the minutes, so I apologize if it's, because it's not on here.
Okay.
Definitely, if I can, I'll talk to Arocha and to you, and make sure that we put it on for the October, first meeting in October.
Okay.
All right, I'm sorry it was missed.
It's not your fault.
But definitely, if I can, I'll talk to Arusha and to you, and make sure that we put it on for the October, first meeting in October.
Okay.
All right, I'm sorry it was missed.
It's not your fault.
Okay, put it on there.
Well, I think we should mention the Berlin Fair.
Yes.
It was a huge success.
It was great.
Magnificent days of weather, and even Saturday, I think it was pretty well attended.
Oh, yeah.
But I thought Friday and Saturday was wonderful, so, you know, shout out to everybody who's involved, and it was a wonderful event.
We are, and we are waiting hopefully on the.
Numbers?
Yeah, I mean, it was, I think the record number from talking to Mr. Dagel there, the president, was 31,000 was the big number, and I, he was hoping to beat that number, so, we'll see when they get their official numbers, I, they may have, it was pretty crowded all three days, so, might, might be the biggest ever, that's what he was shooting for, so, we hope he gets there. And the only thing, just two, two quick things, Elton Road, I just wanted to, again, it's overgrown again, and I know the homeowner, Mr. Leckowitz, called me or emailed me the other day. I spoke to him today, and I know Jeff, you're probably aware that I think Jennifer Wright's sent, trying to find the owner has been unbelievably difficult, because he's not anywhere, other than, I think the last thing she wrote, right, that a marshal was going to find him perhaps living in a house that he doesn't, his not, he's not on a lease, or he doesn't own or anything.
Not owning or renting anything of record.
Right, so, and I guess the other solution, if we can't find him to serve him, which is what the court document says, that we, we need to do that, and then wait 10, wait 10 days before we go on the property, we'd have to go back to the judge and, and get a different order, I guess, right?
Modify the order, right.
So, can we just make sure that, I don't know how long we want to, she, she might, I thought that one email, she might have a lead on him somewhere at some house, even though he's not on record of living there, if the marshal could maybe find him, because apparently, so it's overgrown again, and it is, there's a pile of trash that we never finished removing, which is causing ants and other issues for Leckowitz's, so.
Yeah, he was ejected from the address in New Britain that he was last located at. She's identified a new address for him in New Britain, it's not in his name, and there's no public record that links him to the property. Property's in the name of his longtime girlfriend, it's the best lead she has, so she's given it to the state marshal to serve him in hand at that address. Can't do a boat service at an address where he's not on a lease or on.
Yeah.
Title. So if that in-hand service at that address in New Britain's unsuccessful, she'll make a motion to the court to modify the order to allow us to enter the property without service.
All right, okay, good, okay. Yeah, they have waited patiently, and it was all cleaned up, it's great, but the, you know, the owner never came back after this whole ordeal to do anything, so it's back